Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now, we're going to call this meeting for the Norwood City Council, a regular meeting of October 13th, 2015, to order. Before we get going, I'm Joe Sankar, and I'm like, I guess, the third one down the line. Mrs. Lake had a conference where she's speaking at. Mr. Thornberry is under the weather with a virus, and so this is it. So, we'll open the meeting with the prayer and the pledge. Our Father is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will you please call the roll, please?
Mr. Braden?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Whittington?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Thornberry?
Here.
Mr. Mumper?
Here.
All the members answering present are here, obviously, so we'll then move on. We have a couple amendments to this evening's agenda. There are two ordinances that were presented to us having to do with the discussion from the last meeting as far as the leasing of the equipment and that for the dispatch center, and also then the ethernet services that would go along with that, that would be required with that if this so passes. So, we need to add the first ordinance, which would be the enter into the lease of the radio equipment for the use by Norwood Fire Division and declaring an emergency, would be the first addition under first readings of ordinances. The second one would be the ordinance sender into a contract for the ethernet services with Cincinnati Bell Telephone. What's your pleasure? Mr. Clark?
I move to amend the agenda as you stated.
Mr. Whittington the second?
Yes.
Call the roll.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
The all present voting aye, the motions carried, and they will be added to the agenda. The next item, we have the minutes from the September 28th, 2015, minutes, meeting of our regular meeting of councils, who watch councils' pleasure. Mr. Braden?
We accept the minutes as read.
Second by Mr. Clark. Call the roll.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All here in favor, so the motion carries. Pass the minutes. The, we have no standing committees, meetings of councils, so we don't have any committee reports, don't have any third readings or second readings of ordinances. So, we'll begin with the introductory readings of the first ordinance, which would be authorizing the Director of Public Service Safety to enter into a contract under the state bid/purchase program with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the lease of radio equipment for use by the Norwood Fire Division and declaring an emergency. Before I ask what's your pleasure on this, we do have representatives from the Fire Department as well as the Police Department. And we sent out the packet of information which we had received at the last meeting for people to review if they had questions. These gentlemen are here to answer. So, would you like to address council on this prior to us voting on this? Or, because I mean, we're not going to actually vote on it until after we have some discussion, so.
First of all, thank you for taking this under consideration. And due to conversations that Lieutenant McCabe had today, the second ordinance won't be necessary.
Okay.
And he'll explain that further. This is a government lease/purchase, so at the end of the purchase agreement, this equipment will be ours. This is all brought on, we met with Finance Committee due to the new Marx system, which is statewide radio system. We are currently on, from a previous agreement, Cincinnati's system. And Cincinnati agreed to switch over to Marx. They included us in 90% of it. We don't have any user fees that Marx usually charge per radio per month. Cincinnati included us in that. And they also included all the upgrading or flashing of all of our portable and mobile radios to the Marx systems when this takes over. You know, a lot of the radio equipment and stuff we have right now, we currently use, we got on the ground a long time ago. This is to ensure that we have a solid communication system and a dispatch system, which is not only vital to the police and fire, but it's also customer service to the citizens of Norwood. When they call into their own communication center and they're talking to somebody that's familiar with the city and what's going on, I think that's a huge advantage to the citizens of Norwood. We're one of four PSAP stations in Hamilton County. That is something that's very valuable. We've had it for, ever since the 911 system came online, and I think it would be a bad decision to eliminate our PSAP, because once it's gone, it's gone. You'll never get it back. You know, they've, they're already limiting PSAPs around the state already. So, like I said, you know, that's something that's, we need to hang on to, in my opinion. I'm going to let Lieutenant McCabe get into more of the technical stuff, and he can answer any of the questions that you have actually on the system.
All right, well, the second ordinance, that was with Cincinnati Bell. In discussions with the way this system connects, we had to make a change in that. We have to use microwave connectivity instead of landline or data cable. So, there will be no need to even entertain that, because Cincinnati owns the tower. They don't want landlines into that tower. Their whole system is constructed on wireless. So, that'll be a change, and that's a cost change as well down the line. Now, we were looking at $6.20 a month for fiber wire service or microwaves, double that. But, that's a hard number for five years, according to the agile deal that we've already constructed. It's just a matter of getting the paperwork in hand. There's not really much for me to talk about unless you have specific questions regarding the system. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes, sir. So, the ordinance that we're not going to consider is the one that has the payment arrangements on it? Or the other ones?
Ethernet.
The ethernet, yeah. Yeah, the ethernet one you can, you can chelve, I guess, whatever your pleasure is. But, we did this, we presented this to the Safety Services Director, and under the guidance of Motorola, but we had to ensure that everything was good with Cincinnati, since they are the owners of the tower, and provide the site for it. And in return, we received that radio system originally 10, 11 years ago. That was a deal that was constructed by the mayor and council that voted on it a while ago, and that was huge for us. We would have been left in the dark ages if we hadn't had that deal brokered. But, that system has since changed, and as you guys know, technology is rapidly changing the way public safety agencies communicate. And that's the reason for the switch to Marx. And it's just not us that'll be on Marx, it'll be the entire county. Those fire departments and police departments that utilize the county or Cincinnati's dispatch will all be on a similar system, or Marx system, so.
Just got a couple things on my head up. Mr. Whittington, you have a follow?
Yeah. So, does this change the, since it's going to be all wireless, does this change the relocation of the antenna on the towers?
No.
It's still coming down?
Right. And this, this also includes the large antenna on top of the seahole. It's unstable and Motorola personnel won't even climb it. This also includes the removal of that antenna. We also have equipment up at the water tower that we have to have a dedicated phone line to, and it has to be cooled and heated. It's, it's also a cost. All that'll be moved to City Hall, so we'll no longer have a need for that phone line or, or anything up at that facility up on Indian Mound. One thing I did want to touch on too is, is, you know, the big question comes in that we're asking, I'm just going to bring it out, is cost of this versus going to the county. Been doing this a while. I was involved, you know, when we first got the 800 radio system, and when the county went to that, dispatch fee was $8. That was around 2004. Is that when we got it, about 2004? And January 1st of this year, dispatch fees are going to go up to $21.60 for dispatch. There would also be additional cost involved. We still have to maintain personnel. The police require personnel 24/7, so you're still going to have employee costs on top of that. The big issue to me is, we've crunched the numbers. To me, it's a little bit more effective to win it ourselves and cost-wise. And the big thing to me is, is budgetary concern. You know, we had 4,800 runs last year. I'm not sure how many the police had. That's an inconsistent number. We could have 5,800 runs next year. We don't know. You don't have any control over the price cost of what Hamilton County's going to charge the dispatch. I don't know how you budget something like that. You know, our runs can fluctuate, the police runs definitely could fluctuate. You could have a bad storm roll through, and then we're just, you know, through the roof on it. So, as far as a budgetary item, we know what dispatch cost us now. You know, we, that's a, that's a fixed number. We know what that costs. With the county, that's not a fixed number. And I've seen it through the years where departments have gotten in trouble because of that, because they, they budget a certain amount, and then they get into so far into the air, then all of a sudden, their numbers, their budgetary numbers weren't accurate enough, and they were scrambling to meet the additional costs. And you have to pay those costs. And the, like I said, the other big thing for me is, we would be just another client to the county. You know, so our concerns fall in a long line of other concerns. At the chief's meeting, I can tell you, a good deal of the meeting consists of concerns with Hamilton County Dispatch. So, like I said, I've been doing this for a long time. I've been listening to the concerns, and I've always been glad that we don't have those concerns. So, you know, I highly recommend this option. And if I could be of any further assistance, or Lieutenant McCabe, or Chief Kramer, just don't hesitate to call us.
Anyone else have any questions before I ask one or two? Mr. Mumper?
We're supposed to just assume this needs to be passed tonight?
Yes.
We bring out the dates on him.
The dates are very specific, and actually, we were able to extend that pricing deeper because we knew the time crunch we were under. But, if we do not pass this, then the bid pricing will go anywhere up from 15% to 25% of the cost you see in front of you.
And that's state bid price.
Yeah.
Mr. Whittington?
One other question. The, you also have your handheld, or your shoulder radios that you use. We're not replacing those right now. That's just, this is just the base units and...
What you're looking at here in the proposal in front of you is every item that is required for dispatching, police and fire. And it's essentially the heart of the radio system within Norwood. So, it's the dispatcher consoles, the radios that power those consoles.
Controllers.
Yeah, the controllers. It's, it's pretty technical, but it's essentially that dispatch office downstairs is getting revamped. Keep in mind, that original dispatch equipment is fairly old. What we have online now cannot be fixed. We already, we've had three consoles. We currently have two operating now. One has gone down, and they do not have parts to fix it. So, at some point, if you decide to keep dispatch and don't do anything, you're going to be replacing it eventually. There's just no parts availability. And so, I talked about the technology increasing rapidly. Now, the nice thing is, when we did this, we, we asked for some assurances regarding this. In past history, there's been some trouble with Motorola and the county with that system. The county's going to be paying for the old radio system for another few years, and it's already obsolete. What we had asked Motorola to provide us was, and you'll have it in that packet, it's a technical upgrade, it's software and maintenance that is required with this annually, one year after install. And that, they guarantee the system will be live through 2039. So, that is a big number when you're talking about something as important as radio consoles and dispatch.
Just to touch on what you were talking about too, is our mobile radios, our portable radios, I'm sorry, that the police and fire have, they are, as of now, out of production. So, we have limited time parts availability as far as years go. But, this year for the FEMA grant, that's what we applied for. Good news is, we haven't been told no yet, so that means we're still in the running for it. But, even if we are turned down this year, we're going to put right back in for it again next year. That's how we got our radios last time, and I think we have, Lieutenant McCabe did a pretty good job on the grant proposal. I think we got a pretty good shot of it. But, even if we get turned down, we're just going to turn around and put in for it again next year, because that's, that's a huge cost.
So, are these units you have now, are they adaptable to this?
Yes. That's what I said, that Cincinnati included us in the, they call it flashing the radios. We will not incur a cost for that, and our radios are capable of this flash upgrade. So, eventually, we'll have them come hopefully to here. You know, flash all of our portables and all of our mobiles, and then the police will have the same thing done in order to switch over to the Marx system. The big thing with the Marx system, this comes again for homeland security, technically, with the Marx system, would be able to talk to somebody from here to Cleveland, basically in the Marx system. It gives intercommunications, you have a state emergency dispatching that can happen in Columbus if you have a large statewide incident. So, this is all in the big picture of them trying to get communications up to the standards that all the other responses are.
Couple quick questions. The annual maintenance agreement that we would enter into, you were saying that would cover any upgrades to the equipment and that would be required in order for this system to be maintained over the next 20 years, supposedly?
So, what you have in front of you is a maintenance agreement and a software upgrade. Motorola, and this is primarily because of the Marx system. Marx requires certain software upgrades, and then, and essentially, it's done every two years, but what we've done is broken the cost into an every-year component for budgetary reasons. I can't speak to hardware, but for software, for it to be able to communicate, yes, software, that's correct. There's, there's no guarantees on hardware, but their, Motorola has told us that the system will remain live till 2039. And that was an assurance we needed to make because of past history with Motorola. Now, Cincinnati has that agreement as well, and as does the county, that the system, the radio system itself will remain live till 2039, and then after that, of course, we'll be able to entertain something different.
Because that was one of the concerns, was at the, you know, the hardware also, but, so we should be good hardware-wise for at least the next seven years?
We should, yes. We should be good hardware-wise for a while.
All right. Then the other, one other question I had, it calls out Marx ties in, requires the city of Norwood to obtain a MOU. I didn't see any explanation of what MOU was.
Sure. I can, I can touch on that real quick. So, Ohio Marx, being a state agency, requires anyone that's going into the zone controllers, which is basically what controls the radio system. There's five zone controllers located strategically throughout the state. It only needs one to operate, but in, in safety and redundancy planning, they've located these, basically, think of a five die, place that on top of the state map, and that's where they're at. Toledo, Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, and then out in, out east. Because of it being a government agency and with the technological tie-ins, they asked for that. Here's where Cincinnati is taking care of something for us again. Cincinnati's system is, has the MOU with Marx. It's a very lengthy document. We are covered under Cincinnati regarding that, so we will not have to enter into any MOU, because we're essentially a portion of the Cincinnati system that's already covered within that MOU. Cincinnati, you know, we're not the only user of Cincinnati's system, by the way. UC Police have a similar agreement. They gave the city access to Calhoun Hall, where they located a tower. In return, UC Police got the same, same radio system that we have currently, same agreement. So, they fall underneath Cincinnati, they do not need a MOU as well.
Then, they also, was talking about the different lines, antenna lines and that. I guess that would have been this ethernet or microwave, so we're going to be going to the microwave?
Correct.
So, the new lines that were mentioned in here won't be necessary?
No. There will be no, no hardwire. And in doing that, we're actually increasing reliability to 99.99%. It equates to four minutes of downtime over 365 days by going to microwave, if that.
And we will be relocating the Indian Mound fire transmitter?
Correct.
Here? And will we be required to still, they talked about additional towers outside here?
Those are coming down. What you see on the top of the town?
What we, what we need to reinstall out here? Or nothing, or we will?
Yes. Part of the system will have a microwave antenna on top of the roof. It's essentially just located someplace where it has line of sight to the radio tower at Public Works. It's very small, it won't even be noticeable in the...
And we still have to maintain our UHF antenna, because our house system that alerts us on dispatches operates off a UHF. So, our UHF antenna, we still have to maintain.
One other question that, just was reading through at the end of turn options, you know, there's a few things, we will own this after these seven years.
Correct. Yes, I had a question regarding that as well, the way it was...
Because there was one thing that said about returning it to Motorola, so, okay. All right. Mr. Mumper?
I can ask the mayor if he's got any comments on this?
Mr. Mayor?
One of the things I want to comment is, what the chief said, is opening comments is exactly true. This goes back over many years. Every time we turn around, the county was wanting to take over our comm center, and we kept telling people that you will save nothing virtually, you will not save anything, and you will lose service. So, when the city of Cincinnati came in and put that tower up down there, we was not offered any, there was no frequencies available for the city of Norwood. So, in order for them to put the tower down there, you know, they gave us frequencies to the 800 megahertz system. So, these are all decisions that were made eight to 10 years ago, and they have since come true. One of the things that people don't seem to understand is, a lot of times with this, with the billing of 911, going to the county, if you dial 911, then you would go to the county. All their police calls would come to our comm center. You're going to have to pay somebody down there to answer that phone. So, basically, if your personnel costs are your high-end dollar, or what takes the most of your budget, you would gain nothing. And there, there's been, and I'm sure the chief can address this, there's, and police agencies and agencies throughout the county have been telling their residents, please don't call the emergency, don't call 911, call this non-emergency number, that'll save us money. So, in order to do that, people were calling non-emergency numbers, and then they had to staff somebody in there to answer those phones and dispatch those cars. So, it's one of the ways that, and for us, it's a matter of, I'm a big believer in independence. We've got to maintain our independence, but it has to be done within reason and with some common sense. This is one of those common sense things where we, it's almost a necessity that we keep this, because like the chief said, we'll just be another agency. If a storm or event, county-wide event would come across here, and the 911 system would go overwhelmed, you know, with the county being overwhelmed, with the whole county receiving 911 calls, who would have time for Norwood? So, for us, this 911 system is, is critical. Lot of places, if you call 911, your address won't come up. Ours comes up. So, when you dial 911 from your home phone, they know where you're calling from. So, there's all kinds of advantages to it. It's just that every, every few years, this issue comes up. And I understand the county running into financial problems, and the more people they can bring in, the more it lowers their costs. Well, it's not advantageous to us at this point to go through it. Down the road of Cincinnati and Hamilton County, whatever get their acts together and decide, okay, we want to get a good grade for playing well with each other and combine that system, then maybe it would be time to look at it. But, the county and the city of Cincinnati have not, never even come close to merging. So, when that happens, yeah, maybe we should have, we should look at it. But, for right now, that 911 system is, and that dispatch center is critical. And if you've ever had to use it, when you dial it and you hang up the phone and you can hear those sirens coming to your aid, there's nothing like it. So, I mean, it can be an expense, but that's just part of doing business. And that fire chief, and that lieutenant, and that chief back there will tell you that number one in any incident is communication. Anytime there's a mess-up, or anytime there's a problem, nine times out of 10, you can take it back to communication. So, this is another thing, it doesn't guarantee anything, but it keeps us up to speed to where we can match and give the service that our residents deserve.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments? Chief Kramer, you have anything to?
I mean, the only thing that I would, would add or say is that I concur with everything that was said here tonight. I think keeping our dispatch is important, and I think it's the right vote to make.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Chief Goodman. Okay. No other questions, we will proceed then. So, the first item we have is an ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service Safety to enter into a contract under the state bid/purchase program with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the lease of radio equipment for use by the Norwood Fire Division and declaring an emergency. What's your pleasure? Mr. Mumper?
I move to suspend the rules and have all three readings by caption.
The second? Mr. Braden?
Should I call on her?
As soon as I write down these, you're good. Call the roll.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All right. We have six votes to suspend the rules. We have the, all three readings by caption.
Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service Safety to enter into a contract under the state bid/purchase program with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the lease of radio equipment for use by the Norwood Fire Division and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service Safety to enter into a contract under the state bid/purchase program with Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the lease of radio equipment for use by the Norwood Fire Division and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service Safety to enter into a contract under the state bid/purchase program with Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the lease of radio equipment for use by the Norwood Fire Division and declaring an emergency.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Mumper?
I move the ordinance be passed.
Second, Mr. Whittington? Call the roll.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
We had six votes in favor, so the ordinance passes. Thank you. We'll move on to the second ordinance, which we added to the agenda, but after hearing from Lieutenant McCabe, that this ordinance would not be required. What's your pleasure, Mr. Mumper?
I move to remove it from the agenda indefinitely.
Mr. Breeden? Second. The motion on the floor is to remove the second ordinance pertaining to the Ethernet contract with Cincinnati Bell. Call the roll.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Senker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
Okay. We'll remove that. Okay, next, we have administration reports, and we have a letter from Mayor Williams.
Mr. Ken Crawford, Clerk of Norwood City Council, City of Norwood, Ohio. RE, addressing council. Dear Mr. Crawford, I would like to address council on Tuesday, October 13th, 2015, under the administrative reports regarding miscellaneous business. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Accept the motion to receive and file the letter? Give the mayor permission to speak? Mr. Breeden? Second.
Motion to accept the letter, file.
Thank you. Mr. Whittington? Second. All in favor? Call the roll.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Senker?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Recalling back a few years ago, when, when the winter was bad and everybody was short of salt, and nobody would sell salt, they wouldn't take bids, you would just call up and do the best they could, which we did. And then, the state of Ohio looked into an antitrust litigation thing against these salt companies, and they found that they did exactly what they said, they was price fixing. So, we, we applied for them, we received our rock salt antitrust litigation check in the amount of $5,331. So, we got $5,500 back. And the odd thing about it is, we'll probably end up signing the contract with one of the companies that, that fixes salt, but there's, you're only gonna have so many if you do business with, I think Morton and a few other ones, so, there's not that many out there to do business with. But I think the price will be reasonable this year. I think they got stung for several million dollars, and maybe they'll, they'll think twice before they, they try that again, because the Attorney General, Mike DeWine, had said they'd go after them, and now they're, they're paying the price for it. So, it's not very often that you hear something come back and, and pay off, which ours did. The second thing I want to talk to you about is, Norwood promised, their diplomacy dash 5K run will be this Saturday. They've changed the time from 9:30 to 9 o'clock. And this is a great thing. Future helps our students and kids in the city of Norwood, you know, work towards a college education. So, there's a lot of people that work hard on this. I'll be there, I won't be participating, my Nike trainers are on back order, so I won't be running this year. I had special ones on, on, on order, but they didn't come with a pacemaker, so I can't run this year. I'll be there in spirit. But in all seriousness, this is really a good thing, there's a lot of people that worked on this, and it's great for the students. And I think it's, you know, I think it's a $20 entrance fee, or $25 down there, so, if anybody would, you know, if you can just take some time, if you can tell some people, just take some time and go down and support it, you know, for $25 for what you can get, and for what it does for the city down the road, I don't know how you can put a measure on this. And it's, once again, one of the things that keeps this city strong is so many people volunteering their time to put something in effort to, to promote the city down the road. So, whatever you can do, if, if you can have somebody come down, I think we've got a challenge, Marianne and I, that, you know, if somebody comes up with 25 runners, we'll match it. So, if you wanna cost me something, come up with 25 runners down there, and we'll, we'll match it. We really believe in this, and it's a good thing. So, if you can tell your friends and pass the word around, I can't emphasize this enough. It's supposed to be a little chilly that morning, but I guess from what I'm told, if you're a runner, they don't seem to mind it. So, I wouldn't know, so. But I, I don't, how I can emphasize that enough? So, if you know of anybody, please, take the time and go down to that stadium on Saturday morning, and I think you can start signing up at 8 o'clock, and I think they moved the time back to 9 o'clock from 9:30, so. Any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for the mayor? Mr. Senker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Question for you, I know we announced that the Montgomery Road Bridge repair was gonna be starting, we announced that at the last meeting, and shortly right after it did start. The question is, did they give a estimated timeframe of how long it was gonna be under construction or under repair?
Have you seen the movie, the construction movie? How long is it gonna take? Two weeks. There, we, we had two options, that we chose this one, which would take longer. They, they wanted to close that bridge for 72 hours, or 48 hours, or whatever, north and south, totally close it, and, and we just, we couldn't shut down Montgomery Road. The fire chief and the police chief would've been all over me, but, so we couldn't do that, so I think it's two weeks. Now, if you'll notice, they did the center part, they're almost done with that, and they'll put temporary markings in there, then they'll revamp it and do those two outside lanes. I noticed, we had this conversation, when I go home at night, you know, it starts about 4:30, it backs up anyway, but now it's really backing up. But it's just gonna be that way for a long time. It's an ODOT project, we had a, we had a choice on, on the, on the closing hours, but that's the only thing we had a choice on. So, it, it will be another week.
Follow-up question? We, at the, we had the meeting where we voted to approve the, oh, some special conditions for the people that were going to anticipate, we anticipated moving in over in Central Park. And then about a week or so later, after council passed that, they did make that announcement that they were moving in, but I guess my question is, what would be the anticipated move-in date, or when are they anticipating moving into Central Park?
I've had two conversations with the Vice President, and one of them was over the fountain over there, and I'll get to that. The other one was that they're, they're looking at setting up interview rooms over there, which they'll be advertising, and then, once they do some additional remodeling, they'll start the training. And they hope to have that up and running by January, and I think they're, they're looking at a move-in date, you know, start to, to phase it in, start moving in by May or June. It's one of those deals where they are really, it's a lot of money that they're gonna be invested, like I said, $20 million. So, it's, it's like any other company, once they invest that $20 million, they wanna, they wanna get a return on it, so they can start paying it off. So, he, he will keep me up to date. They're looking at different plans, and they, and believe it or not, they want our input. So, as, as, as things come up, we'll be talking to people, council members, and whoever, getting everybody's input on what they think should happen over there. But it, it should be up and running. The training should begin by December, or start advertising by December or January, and then start training in January, and then start occupying in June. And so, they'll do it in three phases. I think the, the end goal is to lease out 180,000 square feet. It's a lot of room. Like I said, it's 1,000 jobs, so, they, they even looked at, they like the setup, they like the restaurants, you know, it, sometimes people contemplate putting their own cafeteria in there, they're not, they figure there's enough around here. So, for the businesses around here, it will have, I think, a positive effect, restaurants and everybody included. So, I will keep you posted. We're not under anti-disclosure, so we're, we're free finally to talk, but I'm really excited about this one. Like I said, I can't remember, maybe I've missed something, but I can't remember at any one time where somebody said they're coming in with 1,000 jobs. And most of those jobs will be hired by people in this area. So, they're not moving in 1,000 people, so there'll be 1,000 people, almost 1,000 people from this, our area that will gain employment, which I think is a good thing.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll now move on to other requests to address council. The first one we have is from Joe Milik and Andrew Redd, from Xavier University. If you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, and give us your name and address, and...
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name's Joe Milik, and I'm the police chief at Xavier University. And I started back in July, and I apologize for taking this long to, to come before you, but I have met many of you at National Night Out sponsored by Norwood, and we thank you for the support that you've provided law enforcement, including us and some of the other local jurisdictions. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We think that the relationships are very important, and we just want you to know Xavier Police Department, Xavier University, looks forward to being a good neighbor to Norwood and continuing that tradition. So, anything that we can do to help Norwood, and especially as it relates to university activities and the student body, we are looking forward to building that relationship and helping solve some problems when they arise, right from the get-go. So, I won't take up any more of your time, just wanted to take the moment to introduce myself, and let Andrew say a couple of words and introduce himself.
Hello, council and mayor. I'm Andrew Redd, a student by president at Xavier University. I just wanted to introduce myself as a representative of the students, and say that we're trying to be proactive in our relationship with the Norwood community. We're starting this program that was established based on a story that I heard from a Norwood resident. A mother of five-year-old came to, came to me one day, and she said, "I left my five-year-old in the yard one day, it came, came back out, and she was playing with a beer can." From that story, you know, we're starting a neighborhood cleanup program based on our student conduct. So, instead of paying fines, students are able to do volunteer work, and part of that volunteer work would be neighborhood cleanup, and that's supposed to start next Saturday. So, expect some Xavier students in the neighborhood trying to clean up the streets, especially, you know, since we're the ones leaving a lot of the garbage behind. And I just want to open up this line of communication, and if you guys want, have anything that you need to address about the student population, feel free to contact me or Chief. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Would you be able to give your contact information to the clerk in case anybody would want to get hold of you? That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thanks a million.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Very good. All right. Next request to address council is Pastor Sonny James, and would like to address council on Project Perimeter.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Sonny James, reside at 1830 Hopkins Avenue here in Norwood. I want to just give a brief update on what we are calling Project Perimeter. It's trying to get up to 13 surveillance cameras throughout various parts of Norwood. Since there's so many other things I want to address real quick in my brief time, I just want to let all of you know that it is coming together more than excellently. We have a ton of residents, I've personally talked with over 186 residents myself, all of which are on board. We have several businesses, clergy, churches, that are really excited about it. So, I'll be coming back updating it, I'm talking to several council members and some that are trying to become on council now, that are really going to be helping me, and that I will help them walk it through. On the 24th of October, we all know that this is a new election year, and this city has gone through an awful lot of stuff. And as we know, recently, we had a real upheaval of controversy. And I think because we have status quo in Norwood for such a long time, people have the mentality, some people have the mentality that, you know, what was good last year is gonna be good this year. Well, I really thank God that I have the ear and heart of a lot of residents here in Norwood, and I'm very proud of that. So, on next Saturday, on the 24th, myself and several other candidates are gonna just walk the neighborhood and meet a bunch of my friends. And the other day, I had the pleasure of meeting with Andy Clark, who, we had a great conversation, and it's not gonna be Republican, Democrat-specific. It's gonna be, I want to introduce to my friends, those folks that are running, that I want folk to know who I believe have the heart of this community. And so, with that, for those that are of the old-school status quo, I can personally guarantee that there is a new voice here in Norwood generating. And on the 24th, I believe that as new residents are given an opportunity to stand up and say, hey, I've been very angry with some of the things that have been happening, well, now they will have a voice to be able to come together, both parties together, just people that love Norwood. And I want to make sure that my friends are able to just walk and meet some of my friends, because in this election, there will be a difference. I personally guarantee it. Real quick, we have a lot of youth fighting going on in our community, we really need to address it. I'm getting calls and videotapes sent to me by residents saying, Pastor James, look at this, one happened right on Elm Avenue, right down the street from the police department. And the sad part about it is, cars were pulling right up, stopping, and then carrying on. We've gotta stand up. One of the things that we're also doing is, myself and some of my peers, we are securing our community. Mr. Janney, who's a store owner here, been a victim of crime, we've actually sat out at the lot on a daily basis, and if he were here, he would tell you that our community presence has actually, he believes, deterred some of the continuous robberies that people are looking to do. So, as you now look out, I'm asking the community, I'm challenging the community, let's help protect our businesses, let's help protect each other, let's formulate a real heart for everyone. Real quick, I'm, I'm gonna get going here, we've got a lot of dogs coming into Norwood. I'm gonna be meeting with some of the council members, again, Andy Clark, who's proven himself to be a great peer. We sat and talked about it, we even revisited the laws that were there, and we both agreed, the laws are there, but guess what, folks? If you go back and revisit them, there's no accountability, and there's no execution happening. And I personally have videos of dogs walking by with, with owners, and the owners are walking their dogs like this, the dogs are walking them. We have children and seniors that can't be safe in our community. We need to strengthen and, and get tougher on these dog policies. So, be, be looking out for some of that stuff, because it is coming. Again, on the 24th, I just want to encourage the residents, as we come and knock on your door, just to say hi to Pastor James and a few friends, come on out and show by you walking that there is a new voice rising up in Norwood, and we will be seeing a lot of that on this election. But then I personally guarantee you, not this election, but the following election four years from now, there definitely will be a new energy in Norwood, and for those that are a part of that new energy, great. Those that are not will quickly see that people are going to vote because your heart says equality for all in Norwood. God bless you. Now, I've gotta get to WWE tonight with my kids. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Reverend James. All right, we're gonna move on now to unfinished business. Any of any unfinished business? All right. If there's no unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. Anybody have any new business? Mr. Clark?
Yeah, in speaking with Pastor James, and actually, I've spoken to about five residents this week, dealing with dogs going in their yard and the owner not cleaning it up. And I spoke with Ms. Allen, and maybe calling a safety and health committee just to look at these laws and see if there's any ways that we can beef them up, and also have some accountability for these owners that, I actually was out cutting my grass... on, um, last weekend and stepped in a nice pile of, um, excrement. So, uh, peo- people are just allowing their dogs to go wherever they want, and they're not cleaning them up, so I just, um, would like to maybe have a meeting called to discuss that.
Whoever's the chairman of the meeting, feel free to call.
What was that?
Said if, it's up to the chairman to...
Sure. So, yes, we can call a meeting, um, and I actually don't know, does anyone know who is all on the committee? We haven't had a meeting yet, so...
Um, I can look real quick.
I can look. Anyway, so whoever's on the committee, um, I can send out an email, and then we can, is that, sorry, chairman? Is the correct procedure, do I need to set a public date, correct, for the committee, or is that, I'm not quite clear on that?
You can just, uh, contact the, uh, Clerk of Council's office...
Okay.
...to set the meeting, once you find a date with your committee members.
Okay. So I will do that, I will send out an email to the committee and then contact the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and, um, anything else on our new business?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Just to reiterate what the mayor said about the diploma dash this weekend, um, I wanted to let everybody know that if they go to Facebook, we have a Facebook page, it's called Norwood Promise Diploma Dash 5K. If you like that page, it has registration information and more information about the race. And I thank the mayor for, um, getting the word out and the message out about how important this is for our community and to let people know to sign up and attend.
And I concur with both the mayor and Mr. Brown, it is a worthwhile function, we have participated in that in the past, and, and I was anxious to participate again this year, matter of fact, I was heading out the door, let's pass Saturday, and I was told that I'd think you're a week early, so, uh, anyhow, so we'll, we'll do it again next, this coming Saturday. So, um, all right, anything else on our new business? Mr. Clark?
Yeah, just one more thing. Um, I just wanted to invite everyone, our church is hosting on, um, Halloween night a harvest party, um, so if the weather's bad, it's all gonna be indoors, we're gonna have a bounce house, um, we've had tons of candy donated, games and things for the kids, so, um, if the weather's bad and you don't wanna go trick-or-treating, stop on bikes or any Pentecostal church, we're on Norwood Avenue. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Clark. Anything else on our new business? I do have, um, to announce that the Norwood Recreation Commission will be holding on October the 24th their Halloween in, uh, at Linder Park, and the event begins at 6:30. There will be costume contests and a haunted trail. If you need additional information, you can contact the Recreation Commission, 531-9798, but that is October the 24th, and, uh, down at Linder Park. So, anything else on our new business? All right, since our last meeting, uh, I don't know if anybody's been over that way, but a part of Beach Street has been closed because they are working on Beach Street, um, and resurfacing, that was part of the grant that we had received, so that, uh, that progress is, is taking place right now, and, um, hopefully within the next couple of weeks that will be completed. There are signs up and, uh, for trucks to find an alternative route because they can't go up Beach Street temporarily, so, but that, uh, is in the process of being done now as well. Anything else on our new business? I would like to just mention, and I might be wrong on the date, but the, uh, Public Works through a grant, um, with the Health Department, a recycling grant, will be accepting old tires and old appliances that contain Freon, they will, that you can dispose of the tires down there as long as you're a Norwood resident, at no cost, and the Freon would be, will be removed from your appliances at no cost as well. I believe the date for it is this Saturday, the 17th, and Sunday, the 18th, but I'm not super positive, but I believe that's, that's the date, so if not, it's the, the week after. So, but it is a good deal, that way we don't have tires sitting out because Rumpkey will not, will not take the tires if you send them out in the front of your house, so it's a way of getting rid of them, and also appliances, it's a, saves you from having to have somebody up, um, come and actually remove the Freon from your appliances. The city will take care of that on those two days for you. All right, anything else on our new business? All right, then we'll move on to communications. We have a letter from Chuck Barlow concerning monthly earnings tax report.
To Norwood City Council from Chuck Barlow, Earnings Tax Department, 10-6-2015, RE, Monthly Earnings Tax Report. Attached to the monthly, monthly reports for September 2015, indicating collections in the amount of $1,290,726.17. This reflects an average year-to-date increase of 7% from 2014. Should you have any questions, please contact the Earnings Tax Department.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Mumper?
Move the letter be received and filed.
Second by Mr. Clark. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Senker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. The next communication is a letter from the mayor regarding mayor's court fines.
Ms. Donna M. Lake, President and Members of Norwood City Council, Norwood City Hall, RE, Mayor's Court Fines. Dear Madam President and Members of Council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of September 2015. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Clark?
Move that the, uh, letter be and report be received and filed.
You have a second, Mr. Whittington? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Senker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay, yeah, before we excuse the absent member, I would like to thank everybody for putting up with me tonight, and, uh, so hopefully things ran well. Um, so now, can I have a motion to excuse the absent member? Mr. Clark? Second. Mr. Whittington? Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Senker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All in favor here, in favor of, uh, excusing the absent member, so now can we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Clark? Second by Mr. Whittington? Any discussion? Motion to adjourn, call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Senker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
Everybody here is in agreement, we will adjourn, and this meeting of October 13th, 2015 is officially over. Thank you.